Yeah, some of my closest friends today.
All right.
I'm all plugged in.
All right, at this time, I'd like to call the city council meeting to order. Let's start with roll call, please, Chrissy.
Councilmember Budishevsky.
Here.
Councilmember Coming.
Here.
Councilmember Eibl.
Here.
Councilmember Kamish.
Here.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Here.
Councilmember Onessa Rosen.
Here.
Mayor Adams.
Here.
Mayor LeFlore.
All right, let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before us, we have an agenda. Looking for approval of that agenda or a motion on that. Therese?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Awesome, thanks. Go ahead, John.
May I second their motion?
All right, all members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close say nay. Motion carries. Consent agenda, I will read into the record at this time. First item is approval of the minutes from the following minutes, excuse me, from the following meetings. Work session from December 5th, 2023, and council meeting on that same date. List of license applications submitted by the city clerk to the city council, that is on file in her office. Adoption of a resolution accepting donations. Quite a list today. Approval of commission appointments and reappointments. Adoption of a resolution reappointing Jeff Colb as public representative or citizen representative of West Metro Fire Rescue District Board of Directors. Adoption of a resolution appointing Joan Howard to the Bassett Creek Water Shed Management Commission as Crystal's representative. Next item is a resolution appointing Terry Schultz as the alternate for the Bassett Creek Management Commission, Watershed Management Commission. And then adoption of a resolution appointing Bert Ord as Shingle Creek Watershed Management Commission as Crystal's rep. Recipient of an annual notification of law enforcement support office or the ESO program. Approval of Healthy Tree Canopy Grant Agreement with Hannibal County. And adoption of a resolution approving an amendment to the CB, excuse me, CDBG sub receipt agreement with Hannibal County. That's for additional Broadway art funding. That is our consent agenda. Looking for a motion on that. John, go ahead.
So moved.
Looking for a second. Therese?
I'll second that.
All right, all members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close say nay.
Any discussion? No discussion? I just have one question.
These are, these are the consent agenda.
Okay.
Did you want to, we can make a comment after.
All right.
Where do we end? Do we go, all members in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close say nay. Motion carries. What was your comment?
Oh, the law enforcement support office equipment. Just like a little clarification on what that equipment is. Any chance? Chief?
It's like, well, he became the police chief. It's okay. I'm sorry, Councilmember Budishevsky, your question on?
The, uh, the equipment from the law enforcement support office?
Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
So last year, you may remember, annually, you all have to receive the letter that's in your packet from the LSO program. And what the LSO program is, is we receive free equipment from the military with regards to, for example, we've received flares before for traffic accidents. We've received defibrillators before, you know, that type of equipment, but we can't accept it unless all of you say we can be a part of this program.
So is the equipment, is it just random, or is it, is it something that you can actually request, or you can specific?
So there's a, there's a website that we can go on, actually, to look at, to see, like, okay, do we need any flares? Do we need any flares? Do we need any batteries for our radio, you know, any of that? So we can go on there and request them, and if they have them on the website, and then they choose to send them to us or not if they have them, you know, wherever they're being shipped from.
Okay. So it's, it's pretty random, then?
Yeah, it is.
And then, value-wise, dollar amount?
It's a lot. We have received, you know, I, I can get an inventory for you, but we've received quite a few equipment items for free.
I don't think I need a inventory, but, you know, just a ballpark.
Ballpark?
Yeah.
I, I don't know. What do you think, Brian? Fifty thousand? Over that?
Since the beginning of the program, I would say over that.
Yeah, I would say, I mean, I'd be close to six figures, I would say, since the beginning that we've been doing this.
Okay. Cool. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Yeah, just a reminder on the consent agenda, we can pull anything we want off of that and talk about that and vote on it separately. Moving forward, open forum. Is there anybody here wishing to speak during open forum? Do you have any, nobody?
No, that's right.
All right, since we have nobody here for open forum, we will skip by it. We have, next item is a public hearing. Purpose of that one is, or this one, is to consider a new off-sale liquor license for Missy Hope. And they're doing business as Hope Liquor, not to be confused with New Hope Liquor. Located at 111 Willow Bend. Chrissy, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you mentioned, Hope Melinda has applied for an off-sale liquor license on behalf of Missy Hope Incorporated to do business as Hope Liquor at 111 Willow Bend. Staff has reviewed the license application materials and a background check was completed by the police department. A hearing notice was published in the December 7th Sun Post and was also posted on Nextdoor. No correspondence has had, has been received in regards to the proposed new license. Hope is in attendance tonight to answer any questions the council may have. She's in the process of renovating the space and hoping or anticipating for a mid to late January opening. Staff is recommending approval of the license.
All right, thank you, Chrissy. Council, have any questions from Chrissy related to this? No?
Not, not of Chrissy, no.
Next is the open here, did you?
Good.
You're okay?
I'm good.
Uh, next, we have the public hearing for testimony, and we're looking for anybody who's interested in giving testimony in reference to this topic. Anybody wishing to give testimony? Since nobody's approaching, raising their hand, waving, or anything like that, we will close the public hearing. And, um, I think, so why don't, uh, could the owner please step forward at the microphone? Ms. Hope? Could you come up forward by the microphone? Uh, generally, generally speaking, when we do one of these, we always end up asking questions of the people who are taking out the license. I'm assuming that's kind of where you were heading, is that right?
Yes, exactly, right on the alley.
All right, John, why don't you go ahead?
Like to know, basically, your experience with selling liquor in the past, if you've, you could kind of discuss that with us and kind of give us a little background on yourself as well.
Yes, um, I'm working at Park Liquor in Broken Park. That's where I get all the experience. And a long time, I, this is what I wanted to do, so I used to do that back in my country, in Africa, Tanzania. And when I came here, um, it's something I wanted to do. I started working with Park Liquor in Broken Park. And I started working on to get my own. So this is the time.
And I have one other follow-up question.
Yep, go ahead.
So, um, what, can you talk to us about, have you gone through the training for, uh, for liquor sales through the, through the city here in terms of, uh?
Not yet.
Not yet? Are you planning on doing that?
Yep.
Okay, fantastic. And then also, can you talk a little bit about what you have in place to prevent underage liquor sales at your establishment?
Oh, yeah, it's, um, we have to check, um, a driver's license to make sure, um, about the age who are selling liquor. So this is something, um, I'll be serious on it. And that's including safety and stuff.
Are you planning on checking everyone, or are you just planning on checking?
Checking everyone, because I don't know, I can't tell for everybody who walks in to say, this is old, this is young.
So which one's younger, him or me?
I, I can't tell.
Okay. Ask them.
Yeah.
No further questions from?
So you're not using any machines to scan the license? You're just looking at it visually?
Uh, there is a machine, and I can look in, I can use the machine, both. I have to, yeah, I have to as both.
Does that display on the cash register at all?
Yep.
It does. Awesome. All right. We like to see you when you apply for your license, and we don't want to see you after that. Because, because oftentimes, it's because of a compliance failure. And, and we just assume not have that happen, and that's why John asks the questions he asks, is because we do have, we do have suspensions of license, or, um, yeah, of the license when we have those failures, and we also have fines that are associated with it, so it's important that everything is done in such a way where your employees know that it's a very serious thing and that it will be checked on an annual basis. So just, just a heads up. On the other hand, thank you for doing business in Crystal. We want to welcome you in that respect as well.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, you're welcome to sit down.
Thank you.
Thank you. So this is open for council action. Looking for a motion on this item. John, go ahead.
I make a motion to approve the off-sale liquor license for Missy Hope Incorporated doing business as Hope Liquor located at 111 Willow Bend.
All right, looking for a second. Go ahead, David.
I'll second that.
All right, all members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close say nay. Motion carries. Congratulations. All right, and we have another public hearing, which is similar in nature. This one is for the off-sale liquor license for, uh, doing businesses at Dare Liquor located at 6001 42nd. And the license is for RPSMLLC, so, all right, Chrissy, go ahead.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. Revender Singh has applied for an off-sale liquor license on behalf of our PSM LLC to do business as a Dare Liquor at 6001 42nd Avenue North. Staff has reviewed the license application materials and a background check was completed by the police department. A hearing notice was published in the December 7th Sun Post, as well as on Nextdoor. No correspondence has been received in regards to the proposed new license. Mr. Singh is in attendance tonight to address any questions the council may have, and staff is recommending approval of the license.
All right, thank you, Chrissy. Any questions for Chrissy? Seeing none. At this time, I'm going to open the public hearing for, uh, for this particular application. Is there anybody wishing to approach and give testimony relating to this license? Seeing no one approach, I will close that public hearing. And, Mr. Singh, could you please step forward? I think you know the routine, you've seen it.
Yep.
All right. John, did you want to go ahead?
Yeah, sure. Mr. Singh, if you could please tell us about your experience in selling liquor?
Sure.
Also talk about the process that you have to make sure that there's no underage liquor sales at your location.
Sure, yeah. Uh, so I was in, uh, I went to college in New York, and I worked in a liquor store for seven years when I was in college, and I got my master's in finance, and I moved out to Minnesota, so I have two locations in Minnesota right now. One's in Hopkins, one's in White Bear Lake, so we, we're in the business here currently, I was a year and a half now. And at the current location of Dare Liquors, I see they have ID token works, so to your, to your response with the ID check, they do use that right now. The new POS I'm going to place is going to have a second sort of verification ID, so we're going to include the ID token works. I'm going to have a second form, and then the other option is for all of my employees to go through a training for, outside of the city Crystal one, so I have a personal website that I go through to do that, too. And that will double check for all states, not just Minnesota.
Okay, that's well.
Yeah, please do.
So the location in Hopkins, where exactly is that location?
That's actually right next to City Sound Works. That's the biggest record shop. It's right on Main Street.
Right on Main Street, okay. Oh, yeah, I'm familiar with that. Thank you.
All right.
I'm good.
So you heard my conversation of the last? Same. The same goes. Yeah. I won't repeat it. Any other comments, questions?
Well, I just want to, oh, go ahead.
I just had a question. So, you know, you're kind of taking over, um, an existing business. Are you planning on having new employees, using just the existing ones? What's kind of your?
So I actually just found out about two hours ago that the current employee is going to leave in two months.
Okay.
But my manager is here, actually, but, um, so he's going to be working there pretty much full-time.
Okay.
And then I have another folk that's under training right now, too.
Okay.
He's a float, he floats between both locations, so gets a sense of different demographics and stuff.
Okay. Thank you.
So is it safe to say all staff are new?
In two months?
Will be new?
Assuming that this current employee that does leave, yeah, we will be fully staffed with new folks.
Okay.
But I'm local here, so just FYI, I know the current owner is based out of Chicago, so there's only so much you can see from Chicago. I go to my stores every single day. Just, I'll be, I'll be working myself, too.
All right, thanks for that transparency. John?
And then also, with the sale of the consumables, the THC products, are you also doing sale of those products in Hopkins as well?
So, yeah, so with both my locations, the Van Nuysite location, we had to apply for a license, which I did. That took about two weeks for them to process it. In Hopkins, there's no mandate on a license, so I was able to carry. So I do carry it at both locations, but I believe the way we worked it out is January 1st is when we're allowed to sell it. So I don't anticipate until selling until I get a license.
Okay. And lastly, there was an article in the paper, I don't know if you saw that, about the, uh, the potency of the products themselves? I mean, is there, are you aware of any issues within the industry in terms of, you know, viol, you know, how would you say, I wouldn't say violating, I would say just like?
Inconsistency.
Being inconsistent, yeah, in terms of the product itself.
Yeah, so I, I actually check the QR codes that are on the products. And I know with the liquor store, you can have a certain amount of potency, so we stay under that threshold, and I scan the QR codes every single product that comes into the store.
Okay.
And verify that. And there's been one issue with Lupulin. They came out with 12 milligrams when they first initially started the THC products. We actually had to send them back and take a hit on that at my other locations.
Okay.
It was about $1,200, but that's fine.
Okay.
Since, since you brought it up, I'll ask, too. So I, I imagine every city does it a little different right now, as we're kind of in this transition phase. If I'm remembering correctly, from our ordinance, the THC products have to be in an inaccessible to the public. We can't just have them out right in the, on the shelves, is that correct? If I'm remembering correctly.
The edibles.
The edibles, correct.
The seltzers are allowed to be, those are not required to be, those are accessible to the public.
Oh, okay.
In the coolers.
Okay, so edible, like being gummies?
The gummies, the edibles.
Okay, those have to be in excess. Okay, sounds good. Thank you, that, that clarifies it. Are you planning on having any of those products?
Yeah, so I do carry the edibles as well, and edibles, I believe, it's across the state. It has to be behind the counter.
Okay.
And then we abide by that, too. Similar to tobacco shops, I believe.
Excellent, thank you.
All right. Any others? Wow. Really put you through it, didn't it? Well, that's all we need, Mr. Singh. You're welcome to sit down.
Thank you.
All right. Looking for a motion on that. Anyone? Go ahead, John.
I can do that, yeah. Make a motion to approve the off-sale liquor license for RS, RPSMLLC doing business as a Dare Liquor located at 6001 42nd Avenue North.
Thank you, looking for a second. Go ahead for a second. All right, all members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close say nay. Motion carries. All right, congratulations. Welcome to Crystal.
Thank you.
Next, we have disbursements of $25,000 or greater, which we'll read into the record. First item is Health Partners, Inc. for December health insurance premiums. By the way, it's not rude if you want to leave. Please feel free. December, December health insurance premiums for $120,441. U.S. Aquatics for a design of pool. AFP number one is $76,690. Hannibal County Treasurer for half the annual fees for the assessor service is $115,000 even. IRS electronic payments for federal FICA tax withholdings for payday 12/8 is $68,992. Men pair for employees to required contribution for the same pay date is $67,850. Mission Square for contributions to employees' RHS accounts for the same pay date, $97,311. Total disbursements of $25,000 or greater is $548,285 and 40 cents. Questions on any of these items for the, from the council? All right, seeing no questions, looking for a motion. Go ahead, Tajee.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the list of disbursements over $25,000.
Thank you. Therese?
Second that.
All right, all members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close say nay. Motion carries. All right, next, we have, uh, resolution for approving plans and specifications authorizing for bids for the Joint Water Commission, and we're dealing with a Crystal Pump House improvement. We have Ben Perkey here, who's our city, uh, city engineer, to address the council. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is for the Joint Water Commission Golden Valley and Crystal Pump House project. So this is a joint water commission project, but it will be administered by the city of Crystal. That's why it's here before you today. Our pump house, as I'm sure you know, is on Brunswick Avenue, and then Golden Valley sits down on Skyline Drive, right by the golf course. Main purpose of the project is pump and motor replacements at each pump house and also upgrading the electrical panels. Those are getting outdated. Replacement parts are becoming more and more difficult to find. As you can see in the pictures, we've done a lot of retrofitting to both pump houses, and it's created quite a cluster. Funding for the project, like I said, it is JWC funded, so they have capital for, or it's in the capital plan. The construction estimate from our consultant, Bolton Mank, came in at just over $2 million. The budget is 2.7. Golden Valley's portion of the project is estimated at $1,069,000, and Crystal's portion is $1,009,000. Overall schedule, uh, late November and early December, the plans and specifications were brought to our technical advisory committee as well as the commission for approval. We're here tonight looking for approval of the plans and specifications and authorizing advertisements for bids. We will open bids in January and consider the contract the following month. And then the two date ranges at the bottom, I really wanted to highlight for you. The reason this project is so long-term is, one, the ordering of the pieces that we need, there's a long lead time. Then also, we want to avoid the summers because that is when our water is in high demand. So need to do it over the fall and the winter, and then we needed to split it between the two cities because we want to maintain the water, so we want to be able to complete the work at Golden Valley, test it for the summer, make sure that they have no issues before we start construction on our portion, our pump house, in the fall of 2025. So tonight, council is being asked for two resolutions, one for approving the plans and specifications, and the other one for ordering advertisement for bid. Would that all take any questions?
All right, go ahead, Forrest.
Um, since we're administering the contract, is there a kind of like, how, how much work is that expected to be on staff?
As far as staff is concerned, there's not going to be much work. It's going to be more so if there's any, any access issues, if we have any issues with anything leaking as far as the water coming in, we'll have to turn the valves for that. Other than that, it's going to be Bolton Mank, the consultant, will be actually doing the construction observation, and it'll be more so us managing them and checking in and helping out if anything's needed.
Okay, so you're not perceiving a, a big extra staff, kind of?
Correct, yeah. No significant extra effort on our staff.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
All right, anything else? All right. Looking for a motion? Go ahead, Tracy.
Uh, I will make a motion to approve plans and specifications for the Joint Water Commission Golden Valley and Crystal Pump House improvements.
All right, looking for a second. Go ahead, Tajee.
I'll second that.
All right, all members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close say nay. Motion carries. Did you want to do the next one, too?
Sure.
All right.
Uh, I will make a motion, uh, ordering advertisement for bids for the Joint Water Commission Golden Valley and Crystal Pump House improvements.
All right, looking, go ahead, Tajee.
I'd like to second that.
All right, all members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close say nay. Motion carries. All right. Next, on to the Trackless MT-7 machine. It's a sidewalk machine, right?
Yep.
All right. Go ahead.
Yep, so, uh, our fleet management fund has $225,000 set aside for purchasing a new sidewalk machine, the Trackless MT-7. Our current machine that we would be replacing, as I noted in the memo to council, rates on our scale at a 26, the minimum to be deemed ready for replacement is a 23, so the lower the number, actually, the better the equipment is. So, yeah, so we're over the 23 mark. So we received a quote off state contract from McQueen. Uh, the grand total for that is $212,337. That includes the piece of equipment, as well as the attachments, the snow plow and the snow blower. It, it'll be a one-for-one replacement. Uh, existing sidewalk machine will be sold at auction. We are expecting delivery on this machine in the fall of 2024 to be ready for next winter. Tonight, council is asking for a motion to approve the purchase of the Trackless MT-7. Would that all take any questions?
All right, Forrest, go ahead.
Tell me about how bad the current one really is.
How bad the current one really is?
Like, is it inoperable? Is it like?
It's not inoperable. It's at the point that it's requiring a lot of ru, or regular maintenance, um, or not regular maintenance, irregular maintenance. We're constantly bringing it in and working on it, so we're being down a machine.
Okay.
So currently, we have three machines. Um, the way we operate with our snow plowing is we send two out during the snow events, and then we send out the third one to help clean up the sidewalks after the fact.
Okay. And then, um, is there, you need to, like, I know some cities operate with, uh, with also using like a directional brush on these. Is, is there any discussion about having that? I know that a lot of the complaints we get during the winter, I mean, not this one yet, but is having that kind of like little bit of ice, actually, the things that actually causes you to slip and fall on the sidewalks?
Yep.
Um, I've noticed cities that do have a directional brush, that they don't have that as much. Is that something that you considered when looking at the attachments?
So for our attachments, we just focused on the plow and the snow blower for, for this one. Our other machines have brushes.
The other machines do have brushes?
Yep.
Okay, but do you, but do we use them in the winter on the sidewalks?
We mainly use it for clearing in the fall and the spring, when we do kind of debris cleanup. I guess I don't know if we use them very much in the winter, if we're more focused on the plow and the snow blower.
Okay.
I have seen them used in, in the parks.
In, in the winter, in the parks?
In the winter, yeah. On occasion, not real often.
Thank you.
Yep. Any more? Oh, go ahead, Tajee.
Just curious if there's any, like, new functionality with this new model, or it truly is just kind of the same?
This one is getting a slightly different plow than what we have on our other machines. Our other machines have a V plow. This one will be able to angle differently and not just be a V or angled one side or the other.
Okay.
All right.
I just had one.
Go ahead.
Regarding the, the brush, um, the option of the, the improvement to the, that we got the Tool Cat that replaced the, what's the name of the Cushman?
The Golf Cart.
That does have attachments, brush attachments available, so that, that'll be another.
Yeah, I remember asking about that, and I think Mark said that it was too wide for most of our sidewalks.
The, a lot of the brushes are, that's why the trails in the parks.
It works.
It's more feasible, but the, the city sidewalks are, it's large.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, John, go ahead.
I just had a comment, I just thought Mark said that we weren't going to be buying another piece of snow equipment. But then again, you know, these.
No, I think I remember him saying we were.
We were, really? Oh, yeah.
I think he made that point, that we're maintaining three of them.
Okay.
We get those heavy snows and they go down. The older ones go down.
What is the main, uh, thing that's needing to be repaired on, on the existing one? Is it?
Mechanical.
Just the, the, the actual engine itself?
Yep.
Hopefully, this one's more reliable.
All right. Looking for a motion on this one. Anyone, don't be shy. David?
I'll make a motion approving the purchase of a Trackless MT-7 machine and attachments.
All right, looking for a second. Tracy?
I'll second.
All right, all members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close saying no? Boy, switch that up.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Threw everybody, right? People knew in the room are going, what? What happened? All right, next item is the Crystal Cove Aquatic Center. The closing of that. Our recreation director, John Elholm, is here to address the council. Welcome, John.
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm here tonight to talk about construction of the Crystal Cove Aquatic Center and closing the facility next year to do so. Just real quick- Just real quick, broad timeline. This goes back to 2021 when we hired a consultant to hire, hired them to evaluate the leak. Their conclusion at the time was that the pool container needed to be replaced. So 2022, we did phone survey and public engagement to find out what the public thought about replacing the pool. Conclusion there was that the public is interested in replacing the pool. This, earlier this year, about a year ago, financial support was sought for the pool and was successful. Legislative appropriation of 2.35 million. And then as City Manager Bell mentioned earlier, we were successful in obtaining a head and youth activities grant of 300,000 to help with that as well. And then it's also included in our capital plan. Looking back at this year, July of '23, U.S. Aquatics was hired to develop pool plans. HCM Architects was hired to develop building plans. And planning updates were provided to the Park and Recreation Commission back in October as well as to the city council. Concept plans were put on our website then as well. Plans are nearing 75% completion or actually a little beyond that on the building. We've been talking about ways to get the pool built and are talking to, with like construction management team to help us make sure that we keep the costs down. And then concept plans were available at Winterfest and concept plans are currently on display at the community center in the display case. So we were trying to get the plans out there. But the next steps is to officially close the pool for construction in 2024. Our summer brochures, we typically work six months ahead on our brochure. So our first deadline is the end of this month or next week. And staff has been asking, do we put stuff on the pool in there or not? And different staff is asking, am I supposed to be hiring staff at all for next year? So we really are looking just for an official determination that we will be closed next year for construction. So the recommendation is to approve a resolution in support of closing the Crystal Cove Aquatic Center for construction in 2024.
All right, any questions for John? Go ahead, Theresa.
So how long will the construction take? Just one year? So we'll be open again in '25?
That is the plan, correct.
Okay.
Yeah, this one's a little bit tricky because the, the actual proposals from, that we have, have to approve haven't come yet. But yet we're supposed to be hiring for staff this year. So that's why it's kind of, that's another reason why it's important for us to actually, you know, kind of stand by what our talk has been about fixing the pool and, and make official. If that makes any sense. Any other questions?
What are you going to spend the $300,000 grant on?
Well, in our discussions, we had the budget and then there were some things that were kind of on the periphery. Some of the amenities and like the slide didn't quite fit. And so we kind of framed it around, it's a youth sports grant, so we're trying to get things to get kids in the water. So we kind of framed it around, you know, climbing walls and, and things like that.
So it's around the stuff that we've already looked at? Okay.
Yeah, there's no expansion of anything.
Yeah.
Just trying to cover, make sure we're covering everything.
Great.
All right, anything else? Yeah, go ahead, Tajee.
John, I'm curious, I don't know if this would be an option, but could we have a conversation with New Hope to see, could there be a discounted rate for Crystal residents for '24 using their kind of pool? You know, maybe 10% off or something or just for the folks that love our, you know, our pool? Is there any way we could kind of help them out and point them elsewhere for a year?
Well, we currently, they currently offer resident rates for Crystal residents in
Already?
Reciprocity.
Great, okay. John? All right.
Close 10%.
Free candy bar at the concession stand.
All right. Any further questions? Looking for a motion on this one. John, go ahead.
I make a motion approving a resolution in support of closing the Crystal Cove Aquatic Center for construction in 2024.
All right, looking for a second. Go ahead, Theresa.
I'll second that.
All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries. All right, John, you have another one. This is related to Valley Place. Why don't you talk about that?
Yeah, we have a couple, there's been a lot of focus on the pool because that's a big project and a lot of discussion on that. But we do have some other projects that we've been, we've prepared some concept drawings and been talking to the public and it's time to move into construction documents for those projects as well. So two of them, one is Valley Place Park Tennis Basketball Courts. We did a master plan back in 2017 that kind of looked at the tennis and basketball at Valley Place. One of the things that came out of that discussion was trying to move basketball a little bit further away from the play area. Those types of uses don't always co-mingle well. So that was, that was out of the master plan. But then we started having concepts developed. And option B kind of gets at moving that basketball court away from the playground a little bit. We did hear from neighbors that they were not crazy about the idea of the basketball being on the other side of the tennis courts, closer to their houses. Basketball is one of those things that people really want, but not necessarily right across the street from them. So option B kind of moves it closer to the tennis courts, puts it all under one sheet of asphalt like we have at Becker Park. And then option A basically leaves things the way they are. We've been reviewing these plans with the Park and Recreation Commission. We shared them at Winterfest. We did a post on Nextdoor. We have a survey out right now on the two different options, trying to get public engagement. And what we're hearing so far is people like the idea of moving the basketball away from the playground. And so keeping it on, still on the playground side, but further away seems to be the direction people are looking. We are going to continue to gather input before we get into the final design. But we can start doing survey work and getting some of the other things done sooner. But that's kind of two of the options that are out there right now. And then in North Lyons Park, the master plan back in 2017 called for a slight expansion of the west parking lot so that the driveway lines up with the apartments across the street. And this new concept is very similar. It is basically the same plan to just resurface it. You can see the picture in the bottom left, the condition of the pavement there. It's not great, so, so it is just a, not a lot of, nothing fancy here. It's just basically rebuilding what we have and adding not that many stalls just to get the driveway to line a little bit better. So just some notes, WSB was hired last summer to develop the concept plans. They've been talked about over the summer and fall. And we do have funds in the long-term plan to cover these projects. So the recommendation is to approve a resolution entering into an agreement with WSB to develop now the construction plan specifications permitting and bidding for improvements in Valley Place and North Lyons Parks in the amount of $67,264.
All right, thank you, John. Questions for John? All right, seeing none, looking for a motion? Go ahead, Theresa.
I'll make a motion to approve a resolution. Approve the resolution for the professional services agreement with WSB for projects in Valley Place and North Lyons Parks.
All right, thank you. Looking for a second? David?
I'll second that.
All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Well, I was assuming someone was thinking about it.
John, right. All right, that was our last item on our agenda. We do have a couple announcements I'll read into the, or read for you guys. Coffee with a Cop is Wednesday, December 20th. That's tomorrow at the Target Starbucks from 10:00 a.m. to noon. Residents are welcome to join Crystal Officers for free coffee and pastries. Next, the office will be closed December 25th in observation of Christmas. The offices will also be closed January 1st in observation of New Year's Day. Council meeting and work sessions are open to the public. They can be listened to or viewed on our website at crystalmn.gov at your leisure. Or you could attend future meetings via Zoom as well. We still do that. All right, any other announcements from the council? Yeah, John?
Your motion to adjourn?
That's not an announcement. I just announced it.
Um, just so it's for Chief Reverend, just, you don't have to get up. So the shop with the, or the Coffee with a Cop, it's at the one in the Target store, not at the Starbucks across. Okay.
All right. So we seem to have a first. Looking for a second? All right, Forrest, second. All right. All members in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay? All right, we are adjourned.
Recording stopped.